If we can reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a contractual matter and a personnel matter. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We could have introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Robert Teigen.
Catherine Nato.
Jody Vindero. Holly Dellenbaugh.
Ewan O'Leary.
Will O'Bear.
John McPhillips.
And John Walston is not able to be here this evening. First, thank you to Elsmere for hosting us this evening as we continue our roadshow. And do we have any pig students with us tonight? Welcome. Your obligation is to stay until the end of the meeting or until nine o'clock, whichever one comes first. And there are sign out sheets up here on the tables, so just make sure you sign out before you leave to make sure that you get credit for being here. First is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item three, meeting reports. First is our superintendent's report.
Sure. I have a few announcements, but I'm first going to turn it over to John McPhillips to just do a quick overview on where we are with construction. We are making some progress, so I thought we'd give the board a quick overview on that.
Thanks, Jody. Before I begin, I just wanted to recognize Nick and Sonya, our director of facilities, and the entire operations and maintenance crew. There's a lot of work that goes on in any bond project. Some of the larger projects, you see the day-to-day construction in progress, other elements not so much. But rest assured, they've been working over the course of the last several months, making sure that all the elements of the bond project are brought to completion. I'm going to highlight some of the individual project elements by building that have been completed, starting with Eagle Elementary. The pavilion is a hundred percent complete, along with stormwater retention and restoration. The playground at Eagle is almost one hundred percent complete as well, just some final touch-ups, and the window replacement will begin next year. For our hosts here this evening, the pavilion pad is complete, I'm sorry, will be complete mid-November with an install for around early December. There was a bit of a lag on that ordering of that particular pavilion due to supply chain issues, and the playground is in progress. At Glenmont Elementary, the pavilion is complete. Bathrooms are expected to, with a completion date of on or about November thirteenth. And a number of physical plan items are scheduled for next year, including a complete boiler replacement plan. At Hammagrail Elementary, the main roof is a hundred percent complete. We're just finalizing the punch list items on that. The site work is a hundred percent complete. There was a lot of work there. I think the outside of Hammagrail looks great based on some of the work that's been done. Restoration is complete. The Hammagrail Pavilion is one hundred percent complete. The playground is in progress with materials on-site. We're just working to coordinate with the organized labor to get that into completion. Boiler's a hundred percent, and for Hammagrail, the kitchen and interiors are scheduled for next year. At Slingerlands Elementary, the basement abatement and demolition is complete, and framing and sheet rock is presently underway, so that the art, music, ELA, and custodial components in the basement can be complete by the expected completion date of January twenty twenty-four. Middle school, the LMC, finishes and painting still need to be completed. The expected completion date is mid-January of twenty twenty-four, and furniture is currently being procured. The fax room is coming along. We lost a little bit of time due to some asbestos abatement that was unforeseen, but that is coming along. The middle school roof is a hundred percent complete, and the gym floor restorations were completed this week. At the high school, the parking lot is a hundred percent complete, save for the full depth replacement for the access road into the turf field area. The access ring road on the backside of the high school has been repaved. The turf field is very, very close to completion. We have lighting installed. It has been playable with a number of sports teams over the course of the last several weeks. The last component for the turf field proper is the grandstands, which are slated for the end of December. The concession stand is being made watertight for interior work over the next several weeks. The track and field, the track has been refinished, and all of the event components of track and field have been completed. The tennis courts are a hundred percent restored, and at the high school, we're presently working on the new fire alarm system install, which we're overlaying a new system over the existing system, so we have nothing offline. When the new system is online, we'll start taking out the old system. Tennis courts are a hundred percent. And lastly, at our transportation department, demolition of the administration building and the fuel islands has been completed. We have poured the pad for the EV bus chargers. Conduit has been run, and we're just waiting on National Grid to run the overhead electricity and get the transformers in place so we can install the chargers.
Thanks, John. Does anyone have any questions regarding our construction update?
I have just a quick question, which is whether or not the turf field held up to all the rain we got the way that we hoped it would.
Yes, there were, when the turf field was first laid, it takes some time to, you almost have to groom the turf field. When you break down the chrome rubber, there was, we have special machines that go and sort of redistribute, so there were isolated pockets where there was, I won't say pooling, but it was a little bit wetter than the rest of the turf field. With that additional grooming, I have not heard of any additional water issues on the field.
I also just have a couple other quick things. I'd like to thank Assemblymember Fahey and Senator Breslin for their proposed bills to restrict drone use over schools or require approval. I know Holly and Catherine were at the press conference. It was a nice event. There were many representatives there, so I appreciate their really quick work on that issue. I'd also like to recognize Melanie Painter, who is here tonight to present, and she's in the back. She's been named Region Six, two thousand twenty-three New York State Art Educator of the Year. And we didn't plan this when we were scheduling the events. It just happened to be a perfect timing. She'll receive her award in special recognition at their annual, the seventy-fifth Annual Conference Inspire on Sunday, November nineteenth. And I'd like to thank her for her contributions. We're very lucky to have her in our program, and you'll see some of the great work that she oversees here this evening. Finally, I'd like to thank our transportation staff, our directors of operations and technology, as well as John. They took the time to host an EV bus open house last week. We had over eighty attendees from different school districts who came to learn more about EV buses, the infrastructures needed, and to take some tours and answer questions that they had to bring that to work in their district. So it was a great event, so thank you to them for that. And that's my report.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for Jody? Next is the board report. First, I just wanted to say thank you to all the staff and parents that put together all the Halloween happenings across the district this past Friday. I also wanted to thank the music faculty for the great concert that they put together last Monday. I really enjoyed it, and I know, I think there were a few other people were there as well. And I had an opportunity to visit Hammagrail since we had our last meeting, and I got to sit in on a fifth grade math class, a second grade foundations class, which was, and both of those were interesting given the presentations that we have had recently, as well as a music class where I got to play some maracas, which was lots of fun. But anyway, it was really, it was nice to go into the building and see in action the things that we were, we just recently had our presentations on, and I really enjoyed it. So a thank you to Hammagrail for putting that together for me. And then I wanted to also wish good luck to all of our students that are in athletics and postseason play. I know we did have a facilities committee meeting since our last board meeting, so I don't know if Bob or Catherine, if you want to report out on that?
Yeah, so we met, largely focused discussion on the change orders that are becoming, that are coming before the board this evening, went through those in quite a bit of detail with Nick and his team. You know, good questions, good answers, good conversation, and we've got some good change orders that'll keep the project going and on track. So that's coming to us later today.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else that they would like to share? Ewan?
In similar vein, I was invited to go to high school classes. I haven't been invited back to give lectures in two of those classes, so I'm not sure I gained out of this, but I'm going to be giving neurolectures, which I think is really fun. There's an AP anatomy and physiology class, and so we're going to be talking about brain anatomy. But I was really impressed with the level of some of the work being done, both by the teachers and the students. That was really nice to see. Couple of things on, you know, recognition stuff. I know the cross-country boys and girls teams have sectionals this coming weekend, and both teams, both at the VASTI and JV level, have been doing really well this season. It's been nice to watch. Several other sports teams. I know the football team is playing, I think, Niskuna in the next level of playoffs. So they've been very successful so far. It's pretty impressive. And there are a bunch of others. I'm sure I'm missing the volleyball team, for instance. Also, the national merit scholars. So we had several folks who took the PSATs recently and were recognized at the top two levels of national achievement in that, which was, again, a pretty cool thing.
I also attended the faculty recital, and it was so much fun and just such a nice opportunity for our students to see their music teachers doing the thing they love to do in their own world. So I highly recommend it for next year for anyone who wasn't able to go. And I also just wanted to shout out the middle school counseling staff for hosting Raising a Beautiful Child last week. A lot of, I think, really valuable dialogue about building lessons of resilience into raising our middle school-aged children. So I was happy to see a number of parents at that presentation.
Thanks, Will.
Yeah, I just want to lift up and underline something that you said earlier, and just really appreciate the PTOs, the PTAs, the, any other PTs, parents, teachers, organizations that I'm missing in the district. When we go out on the road tour at the beginning of the school year, they're always so welcoming and really appreciate the folks who put in the time and the effort and the love and the care to just welcoming us to the schools and providing little snacks and dinners and whatnot. It's very nice. So thank you.
Just building off the concert, it reminds me I should thank the Best Line Music Association, who put a lot of time and effort into the music program. And I'll give them a plug. Their merch store is open now for the next month. If you'd like a BMA t-shirt or hoodie, you can go get one, so feel free.
Next are our student reports. Do we have anybody here from the high school student senate?
Hi, I'm CJ Frantini. I'm the co-president up at the student senate. It's good to be back. So this week at the high school, we have a couple of big events. Next week at the high school, we have a couple of big events going on. We have a dodgeball tournament Monday through Thursday that we're super excited to put on. And we also have a girls' flag football game Thursday night, so again, really excited to put those events on. Also tonight, today, earlier today, every student got an email with the survey in it, a yonder pouch survey. So students, if you have any questions, concerns, comments, feel free to check out the email. Send us a response. And yeah, we had a good week at the senate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I don't think we have any middle school students this evening, but I do think we have some friends from Elsmere here to talk to us tonight. They're like, finally! Very patient.
Welcome to Elsmere. We're happy you are all here tonight. We'd like to share some special things about our school, but first, we'd like to start by singing the Elsmere School Song. It was written by a teacher more than twenty-five years ago, and it has been sung by our community ever since. Please join us if you know the song.
Elsmere School is the place to be, all the way from home you see. We all know that when we go, we have a place to love and grow. Friends and teachers always caring, time for learning and for sharing. Our whole ways, we spend our days, Elsmere School, we sing our praise.
You are sitting in the oldest building in our school district. Elsmere was built in nineteen twenty-seven for students from first to eighth grade. As the population grew, the building, so did the building. Additions were put on in the nineteen forties and nineteen sixties.
You are also in the smallest school in the district. Elsmere has two sections of each grade, and the connection special education class. As of today, we have two hundred forty students and one hundred eighty-seven families. Our small size lets us know each other well. We get together with our little buddies, have birthday lunches, do morning circles, and have monthly assemblies.
Our assemblies are right here in the gym. At our assemblies, we celebrate birthdays and hear from students about special things they're doing, like a Girl Scouts sock collection. We celebrate special members of our community, like at our upcoming veterans convocation and our senior assembly at the end of the year. We also talk about the Elsmere pride traits at our assembly.
Elsmere pride is the theme of our whole school. The traits of pride are listed on the banner there. We try to use these traits in everything we do in school, on the bus, at recess and lunch, everywhere, really.
Creative Elsmere teachers from many years ago created the acronym PRIDE. Our teachers are still creative, smart, and caring. We have both teachers who've been teaching for more than twenty years and some who are just starting. They all work together to make our school fun and meaningful.
This includes our special teachers and support staff. Like all BC students, we have music, PE, library, library lab, and art. As fourth and fifth graders, we also can join band or orchestra and choir. You'll hear more about our art program soon.
Speaking of special programs, we have many events, too. To celebrate one of my favorite things, reading. These include K book, storybook pumpkins, One School, One Book, author visits, and March Book Madness. You should come back to visit in March.
And of course, although we don't like to brag, we are very proud of being named a national Blue Ribbon School of Excellence twice in nine years. We encourage, we encourage you to take a look at our new Blue Ribbon mural designed and painted by the Elsmere Illuminati. Every student put their handprint on the mural to show that we work together here.
Thank you for all of your work to help our school community. We appreciate the school board, our amazing PTA, and others in the community who make our school such a great place, such as the VFW, who teach the fourth graders house care for the flag, and the Elsmere Fire Department, who make a yearly visit to discuss fire safety. In appreciation of your volunteer service, we would like to give you these small but important gifts. Thank you again. Have a great evening.
You got your pins ready?
I do. I do have pins. And if you guys want to come up here, I have a little something for you. While you're going by, I'll give that to you. Thank you. Did you get one? There you go. Oh, thank you. Can I give you one of these?
I got one of these.
Thank you so much.
Do I get a pencil?
There you go. That's for you. Thanks for coming. Great public speaking.
Nice job.
Nice job. Did you get a pin yet? You got one?
Did you guys get a pin?
There you go.
Nice job.
Nice job. Thanks for coming. Thank you for your presentation. You guys are welcome to leave. You're also welcome to stay, but I definitely understand if you would like to go home. All right, next on our agenda this evening is our presentation, and we have a presentation on our K-12 art department program. And congratulations again, Melanie.
Thank you. I appreciate it. This evening, we're actually going to honor some students. This year, we have twenty-eight students that represent Bethlehem at the New York State School Boards Association Art Exhibit. This was a digital display of their artwork at the annual New York State School Boards Association Conference this past weekend in Buffalo. Board of Education members will also find a sampling of note cards from the exhibit that were printed as a special thank you for your service to the students, faculty, staff, and community of Bethlehem. So I'd like to call up the students, and Mr. Teselli is going to help me hand out some certificates to our students. So we're going to go through each one, and I'll read the students' names. So we'll call up each student individually, and if you would come up when I call your name, I'm just going to have you line up over here with your certificates. So first is Cadence Relier. Next is Anayana. Yana Mantra. I might have to move this closer. Can I take, can I take this out of here?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I got to get it. With experience and, you know, being honored as an educator, you get a little older. It comes with experience. I can't see anymore. Next is Suniva Martinez. It's Su-Eva. Suniva. Beautiful. Next. I have Leo Shemiri. Next is Christian Farrell. Next, we have Gabriella Deeb. Next, we have Briar McCoyne. Gabby Perry. Melissa Yang. Taj Dehise. Chase O'Donnell. Riley McInerney. Camilla Heckman. Kaye Dellenbaugh. Anson Chamberlain. Sophia Ritchie. Teagan Rosenkrantz. Kaitlyn Donovan. Taryn Van Franken. Madeline Priba. Nina Hojalar. Valentino Logrippo. Rose Pastore. Tanner O'Brien. Aster Barden. Sanamann. Allison Tangor. Carter Raylinski. I can't thank you enough for coming out here tonight. It's amazing. Open up her certificate so you can see her name, so it looks pretty. They're art awards. They have to look pretty. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Much better, much better than the black. Congratulations. And any of you that would like to stay and learn more about the art program, please feel free to stay. But I know it's a late night for many of our young students, and a lot of my seniors are all trying to finish up November first deadline tonight, so, you know, get those in. So thank you so much for being here, everybody. Congratulations. Thank you for coming.
Because November first just came right up. Yeah, yeah. You get your certificate?
I got my certificate.
I'm going to hang it up somewhere where I want to.
Can we switch the presentation to the art one next? Oh, now I see lots of people. But I was so thrilled. A lot of the seniors said they were. A lot of the seniors said they were staying for tonight. They were very excited to hear about the art program. So I see lots of my National Art Honor Society members here tonight, so thank you for being here. So the artwork in this display features results of a program that we've worked hard to develop over the last five years. The Art Department is on a five-year plan. We're on year five of that. So certainly, some of our plans and new developments have changed as new things in education have come about, and our educational staffing and our educational settings have changed over the last five years. But our mission has stayed the same. So we started our five-year plan in 2019. We began by developing a mission statement that focused on students' ability to use their imagination and problem solve using their own creativity. Many times, you'll hear art teachers say that we teach creativity, we teach problem solving. But what does that look like? You can't always measure that with statistics. So what I'm going to present today are some of the samples of that philosophy that we've maintained over the last five years, even with different staffing changes, different settings, and different resources that we've been using. So that's the mission statement that we've been holding on to. So we have five goals that we set forth at the beginning of our journey for that mission. Our five goals. Goal number one was to address the new New York State art standards. These were written in 2017 with several of our educators across the state, including a few right here from Bethlehem. So this includes the development of curriculum at the K-12 level to adapt technology supplies and support the changes in the standards. All art faculty addressed the standards in their lesson plans at this time. The standard changes were to be able to put into full implementation for the 21-22 school year. Teachers were trained on these new standards in all curriculum materials. The main curriculum shift is a move to enduring understandings and away from discipline-based art curriculum, meaning that the standards that we teach are not we're teaching painting, or we're teaching drawing, or craft-like projects that lead students all to making the same work of art by following the teacher's directions. The skills are based in the elements and principles of design, and students' creativity and voice is valued over the product. We are finding that students can articulate their creative process and take more ownership in their artwork. So some of the actions that we've taken, students' skill development is focused on growth and development. One of the things that we're working on is the Individual Arts Assessment Pathway. The assessment portfolio is being implemented to start in this school year, in the 23-24 school year, with our Studio in Art and our Studio and Media Arts classes. The sample that I have up there really demonstrates the growth. This is one of the students. He's a senior in the high school. He's actually in one of my AP classes now. But you can see the development from his first drawing that he did to get into our accelerated class at the middle school, where he started to draw hands, went into our Drawing and Painting class at the high school, learned how to draw fabric, how to see things, and then moved into a more expressive way of creating his ideas. To the final piece on the bottom right, where he sits in the bathroom, where he's becoming much more expressive and much more technical in the way that he's creating his work. So this is just an example of some of the things that we would see in this portfolio. So the four-plus-one pathway is just another way for students to add to their graduation pathway. So this is just a sample of one of those, but we're going to start implementing that this year with our Studio in Art and our Studio and Media Arts students. So the next one that we're working on is we're working on professional development. Because we have these great new standards, we have great new ways of teaching students, but we needed to teach teachers how to teach this in this new way. So our first action was teachers were given the opportunity to do as many online classes as possible. We did a lot of work with the Art of Education and doing online trainings, both with the New York State and with the National Art Education Association. This online PD allowed students to learn and grow at their own pace. Teachers quickly wanted more. The Professional Development Grants allowed teachers to explore new artistic materials and methodology. Teachers attended the Teaching Artistic Behavior Conference in Boston. We regularly attend the New York State Art Teachers Conference. This year, it's in Albany, and most of our teachers will be attending that. And also, moving on to the National Art Education Association conferences as well. As the Region 6 NYSADA Chair, I plan professional development for our teachers. One of the things that you see featured here is Eric Scott. He's a leader in choice-based art education. He came here to the high school and did a full day workshop for our teachers on visual journaling. At this point, teachers are really starting to teach other teachers, which is great. So they're moving on from not only learning these things, but many of our teachers have begun to teach at conferences. They've been asked to run local workshops and regional workshops. We worked with the Bethlehem Art Association to offer watercolor workshops at Five Rivers. We're teaching and learning from one another. It may be learning centering the pottery wheel during our superintendent's conference day, or coding painting bots. This year, we even took the BCTA members to Yale University Art Museum, discover new ways in which different cultures express their creativity. And that was a great trip. We had many math teachers that came on the trip. We had social studies teachers. So it was a nice way for them to understand how artwork can be used to talk to many different people. So we're at the point now that we need to take a step back and evaluate the effectiveness of this work on student learning. So these are just some of those examples. Our next goal was to create a connection to community and career resources. Each year, we support the art program through community and career development. We find opportunities for students to explore their art-making outside of the classroom by participating in things like the Bethlehem Art Association, attending festivals like the Media Arts Festival, the Festival of Young Artists at SPAC. In addition to college visits, students are also provided opportunities to earn college credit for their advanced coursework. The students in Advanced Graphic Design, Advanced Drawing, and Advanced Painting earn credit through Siena College, and students in Advanced Photography earn credit through SUNY Albany. We help students prepare their portfolios for college and participate in community art projects along the rail trail, even with our beautiful mural here. I actually saw one of the artists come in. Abby, thank you. So it was really great to see the work that they did with the summer work that they did on mural with our guest artists here. So we even painted things like, we did a... This is just this past year. So we do things like having an art faculty art show every year at the Bethlehem Public Library. We designed the BOU logo with our graphic design class. We did murals at the school. Our National Art Honor Society made tote bags that we donated to the farmer's market. The Coyote went to Five Rivers. It's part of their summer education program. So these are just some of the things that the kids are doing, you know, outside of just their normal curriculum. So you'll notice a difference in the delivery of art instruction at all levels as well. So our next goal was to implement the Habits of Mind and Teaching Artistic Behavior. So we're teaching artistic behavior, not necessarily how to use a material only. Students definitely learn how to use materials, but we're trying to teach the students how to think like an artist. What are the steps that you need to take in order to become proficient at your skilled medium? So with this, they ask the students to plan out their ideas and use materials with intention. To think like an artist is to truly problem solve and use their own creativity. We're using what's called the Habits of Mind. They came out of Project Zero at the Harvard University, and it's essentially eight ways of working through a creative problem in order to increase students' concentration and investment in their artistic products. So many of the students, you'll see some of the examples here. The students are not only assessed on the final product of what they're creating, but also in the process. How do you get to where you are? So you'll see things like brainstorming ideas, and it allows the students to get to a much deeper place with their art materials. So it's not a student walking around to the teacher asking them, "Hey, is this right? Is this right?" The students are starting to create those ideas themselves, and they will seek out the teacher as a mentor and as a coach, rather than just being a judge of their artwork. So these are the... Oh, my... I got shrunk a little bit. But these are the eight Studio Habits of Mind that we use in the classroom. So the students are stretching and exploring. So many times, you might think of ways that you might be accelerated in art. In an art class, everything that the students can do, I can find a way for them to differentiate in that class. They can work a little harder. They can try it on a bigger piece of paper. They can try it in a new way. So there's always ways for them to find ways to explore and stretch what they're doing in that class. They're learning ways to express themselves. They're developing their craft. So when they're drawing something, they might try it two or three times to realize what kind of paper it works the best on. Students are evaluating their work. They're understanding the arts community. Where does your artwork go after you make it? So this is something like, I have my seniors. They hang their senior show. You'll see me out there with a level like, "Oh, you sure it's straight?" But we let the students make their own decisions about the pieces that they pick for that show, how they put that show together. We also do that at the elementary schools, letting students pick the piece that they put into the art show. It gives them more ownership of what they're doing. We're asking students to observe, to engage, and persist, not to find one answer to something and give up on it, to try it again, see how you could change that, and persist, and try something new. Not to rip it up and throw it in the garbage when they don't think it's right. Try it again. What else can you do with this? These are great mistakes that happen in the classroom. So we want the kids to reflect on this as well. So what are the things that, when something doesn't work, how are you going to come back and fix that? Like, what are you going to do differently the next time you try this process? So the Habits of Mind are not unique to the Art Department. These are things that are used across different disciplines as well. You'll see these in engineering, mathematics, science. We're using the art ones in our program to help guide our lesson planning. So that's kind of where we are with that. So you'll see this in the students' work. We use student planning processes for examples. Students' research project ideas. Look at other artists for inspiration. And students are given choice in the materials and subject matter that they're using. And students will use that to create their own works of art. So our next goal is also working on something that's not new to us, but building fine motor skills with our elementary students and our high school students through the use of sculpture lessons, where they're using their hands to build. You'll see this in the addition of blocks, manipulative play for our early finishers. So instead of getting maybe a coloring sheet or something like that when they finish up a project, students are creating with manipulative blocks that they're building with and making things within that setting. We're working with our occupational therapists to learn about different ways of teaching students cutting skills. We're finding that more that our students are not coming in with the same cutting skills that they had. So that's one of the things that we're working on with them, and gripping skills as well. Looking at the Foundations Program and their handwriting samples, and how we can teach that in the art program as well, make sure that we're teaching the same skills that they're teaching in the Pushing classes for kindergarten. Some of the other things that we're doing for that, so in addition to increasing students' skills and working on that in the elementary school, you'll also see this. We have several more ceramics classes at the high school than we've ever had before. The students love the hands-on classes where they're building, you know, manipulating things. So it's really great for those hands-on skills. And also, our Metal Design Class as well. Corey Fong is our Metal Design Teacher. Our students win several awards for their metal design work. He's a pretty talented artist in metal design as well. So we're looking at ways to increase students' skills in gripping, cutting, in our K-3 curriculum. And we also are, you know, thanks to our building principals, we have kilns that are working in every one of our buildings now. So you'll see that at all of the elementary schools as well. Our five-year goals certainly need more time to develop over the next year. But I'm so proud of the work with such dynamic... I'm so proud to work with such dynamic art teachers. Every time, together in a meeting, every one of them is, you know, joining around to say, "Okay, what are we going to do to make our practice better?" So I really work with an amazing staff of teachers. Every one of those buildings, they can talk to you about any one of these goals that we've talked about tonight. They truly love what they're doing and will always put students first. They're always looking for new ways to innovate every year. There's never a day when we do Professional Development Grants, they don't have new ideas or new ideas for classes they'd like to try. They really are full of that innovation. So I hope this has given you some insight into some of our philosophies and strategies in our education here at BC. And as we kind of close out our five-year cycle, you know, at the end of this year, I'm hoping to give you a few more examples of how we're working on these five goals that we developed a few years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. And I just wanted to say, thank you so much for the note cards.
Oh, this was Jody's idea. I just had to put the images on them.
Is that because I said so much all the time, how much I love you?
No.
Completely unrelated. But thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Melanie? Catherine?
I mean, thank you. That was a fantastic presentation, and it's always wonderful to... I mean, art classes, at least at the elementary level, are where I've got, where my, you know, I've got a child, is just joy. It's just such joy. And it's very clear that our teachers throughout the levels and throughout the district are bringing that joy and that love of the arts and instilling it in the kids. So, I mean, just thank you. And thanks to them, the entire team is amazing. I think the only question I would have is like, is there... And I'm sorry I went first because I was going to ask you this later. But like, is there anything... Is there anything else? Is there anything that you wish somebody would ask you about the program? Or that like, that just is worth really continuing to underline? Again, you just finished the presentation, so maybe not the greatest question, but just wanted to see if there's anything else to lift up here.
Not necessarily. But I think, you know, every one of the teachers feels very supported. You know, whenever they have a concern, they will bring it to me. They know I'm going to bring it to Dave and Jody. So they really do feel supported. You know, I'll find Dave in the hallway, and I'll just be talking to a teacher. And he'll have an idea, or she'll have an idea for something. He's like, "What do you need? What do you need?" So it's always, you know, I feel very supported here. And, you know, anything that I come up with, any idea that I have, someone will be behind me to, you know, lift me up and we'll figure out a way to make that happen. So, you know, I know that's a community, and it's not just me, it's not just Elsmere. It's this whole community here.
I was wondering, you know, we have... You mentioned that we have more offerings at the high school. With our decreasing enrollment, are you finding it hard to fill some of those classes?
So what we're doing is we're really looking at enrollment. So we looked at enrollment over the last 15 years, and we're still in the process of looking at the Curriculum Handbook and pulling out a few of those classes that may have under-enrolled for the last few years and having kids a little bit more focused. And if we can run four sections of one class, it just allows the kids a lot more flexibility to get into those classes, rather than just running one section of like 16 kids in one class. So we are going to need to pull a few things out of the Curriculum Handbook to make sure that we are maintaining a real solid program for our teachers and for our staff, so that the staff are not teaching five different sections a day. You'll notice that the way that we've staffed the Art Department at the high school, like, I have a ceramics teacher. Like, when I say metal design, I have a teacher who is skilled in metal design, you know, very similar to what you would see in a music program, where you have like a band teacher, you know, orchestra teacher. I have my fashion teacher. I have my photography teacher. So by allowing us to streamline that a little bit, it'll help with some of the staffing. Thank you.
I didn't mention earlier when we were talking about our school visits, but I did visit the High School Art Department, and I sat in on the Metal Design Class. And I was very impressed. I didn't know what to expect, to be honest. Didn't know really what metal design was. I thought, am I going to a shop? You know, like...
Yeah.
But I was so impressed by so much within the class, but especially the fact that each kid was working on a completely different project than any of the other kids. And they were allowed to explore those projects at their own level, but also in their own interest, which I think is one of the wonderful things about the higher-level art classes. And I love the fact that you are also bringing that down to the younger kids as well, giving them more ownership over their art process. And thank you for educating me about... You talked about Habits of Mind and the Artistic Behavior. That's not anything I've ever thought about, really, about how art education really starts with the Artistic Behavior. So thank you for exposing me to some new ideas. And I do really appreciate also what you were saying about working with our OTs on grip and handwriting, and how that, you're using the same language as the Foundations and working on handwriting within the classroom. Because I do think that we've all noticed that our younger students do often, you know, have less experience with linear skills. So I really appreciate the fact you're bringing that into the art as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Melanie. And next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who'd like to address the board on an agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Item six, action items, A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through four.
Second.
Any discussion?
I've got a question.
Yes.
So as we're looking at the sub-rate sheet, this just reminded me of a conversation that we had earlier in the school year about using building level subs, or not building level, building subs, and what the kind of thinking was around that, if that's going to continue. I know you were saying you were evaluating it at that time. So when this came up tonight, I was just wondering.
So we've been tracking if we're short subs on certain days. And so far, we've actually been very good. I think we increased our rates for retirees. So we've had a lot more retirees coming back subbing, which is great. So we haven't, we've had some professional, we've had a lot of professional development this fall where we've needed 30-plus, 40 subs in the district, and we've been able to fill all of those. So, and October tends to be one of the months that it does, we see a higher number because there's a lot of college visits, you know, parent weekends, weddings and things. So we have a spreadsheet that each of the buildings is tracking that, so we're monitoring it. If we get to a point where we're having struggles with that, then we talked about how we would potentially use some building subs across the district, but we haven't had to at this point.
And at this point, do we have, when we're calling in subs, we're calling, are we, is there any consideration for like, "Oh, this individual most often works at Eagle," or, you know, whatever?
So a lot of times, if the teachers know they're going to be out for professional development or planning with them, they'll reach out to, again, some of our retirees and make arrangements for them to come in. Sometimes it is random, but that's always been the case.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Couple of things. There's a bunch of change orders in terms of, you know, the bond items that are being constructed, most of which, you know, in general, seem to be small additions. Just curious, John, in general, is this just stuff that comes up as you take down a wall and you discover, hey, we need more circuits here? What's the kind of general basis for these?
So they fall really into three categories. You have owner requests, which there may be an issue, you're working on something, and as you're looking at it, you know, it'd be a good idea if we could maybe, you know, add some additional conduit for future wires there. There's unforeseen, where you do your best based on the available drawings, the specs, what have you, but when you open up the wall, there was some asbestos covering for pipes, just as an example. That's on the unforeseen side. And then you have an error omission, or I'm missing the other term, the error omission or design changes, where there was an error in the site design. There was an omission in terms of additional information that would have helped any one of the contractors move to the next step. So that, we try to break these up into those three categories, just for clarification.
And I know, you know, when we do the bond and such, there's a category in there. It's basically things we didn't know when we put this bond together. Do I read the top sheet correctly as we had a budget for that kind of category as $825,000? And with this current set of changes and so on, we'd have used $600,000 of that?
So within any particular contract or contract service, there was an allowance built in. And that would cover most of these issues. And with an allowance, a overhead and administration fee is built into that bid process. There are also instances of a change order where the administrative and overhead is not built in. They're sort of served the same purpose. But there's a couple of instances where it's a change order versus an allowance. When we had done several meetings ago, some of the deduct change orders also addressed that, the allowances as well. So we do for any individual contractor, whether it's roofing or plumbing or HVAC and mechanical, there's allowances built into those specific contracts, and we're drawing down on those over the course of the project. If there's anything additional at the end of the project, that will provide the district and the board an opportunity to be, how much money is left?
Sure.
What can we do with it? Is there enough funding to bring in an element or several elements that we had to shell because of where we stood on bid prices compared to the overall available funding?
But just to make sure I'm, you know, the top page of this, right?
Yep.
I'm reading that correctly, that the initial budget allowance amount was $825,000?
Across all, all?
So not just for Turner, that was for all the category?
That's correct. This is a summary that feeds into all the supplemental documents below.
And of that, with this current set of changes, there's something like $600,000 remaining?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any additional discussion?
I have a different item for discussion for me.
In this category?
Yep.
Okay.
So we've also got the, you know, appropriation status detail report. I'm just going to note, you know, John and I have been having an onboard discussion, basically, about the level of detail we want in this kind of report. And I had planned to have some examples for him and for the board, specifically where I thought more information would be good. I apologize. That'll be the next meeting. I've had too many exams and too much grading, basically, of my own to do. That's all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through seven.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through 10.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? And I'll just note that I believe Ellen Dorado, our new transportation director, is with us. You want to stand up and wave?
Welcome.
Congratulations.
And good luck.
Thank you so much.
D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following, action item one.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now is the time to come up to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. On November 15th is our next board meeting. That's going to be back at the high school. And we're anticipating executive session at 6:00 and the meeting reconvening to open session at 7:00. On November 20th, at 6 o'clock at the high school, we have a policy committee meeting. And then on December 6th is our next board meeting after that. And that one will be at Hammergrill. So it'll be back at the high school, and then the one after that will be at Hammergrill. And again, anticipating executive session at 6:00 and then the regular meeting reconvening at 7:00. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Our PIG students, come up and make sure you guys sign out.